You should have received in your packet the minutes from last month and the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? So, no, we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Do we have a second? Have a second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so everyone had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from January 21st. The amendments need debate, concerns, motion to approve?
Well, we approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
The sound? Any opposed? Meeting minutes from January 21st of 25 are approved. Leads us right along into new business. We have a view of a special use permit application. We will turn it over to Ms. Black at this time.
I have put together based upon the application that was presented to the planning commission. I received it on completed and revised application on February 3rd, 2025. So, I was able to put that together and get it into the work packet and properly advertised. It was advertised in the declaration and in the ZET for two consecutive weeks. The application and the system is under Cellco partnership. The business has Horizon Wireless application numbers 2025-0068. And we have with us tonight via a Teams meeting link, three or four different participants from Horizon Wireless. They will be talking with the planning commission tonight a little bit about their application, their intentions. And then from there, we'll have whoever needs to speak first go. And then what we'll do is sum everything up based off my staff report, which you received via email along with your agenda. In addition to my staff report, you were received specific exhibits, which are on the table. You had exhibit A, B, C, and D. And that information, again, is laying out here on the table. Visuals, they are in your staff report. If anyone needs to see those or discuss those, they're laying right there. So, Brian, our IT guy, is going to help us run the show. Brian, if you've got Lori Schweller. She is, hello Lori.
Hi, Jada.
How are you, everybody? Nice to meet you, probably, you know, actually get to see you. I'm not sure if you can see us, but we can see you. And I'm just going to allow you to present your application and whatever items that you would like for the planning commission to know about your project.
Excellent, thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, well, thank you so much for your help with the application. And I'm here tonight with Sean Chai, who is with Paman Consulting LLC, which has been managing this project. As Ms. Black explained, the applicant in this case is Horizon Wireless. And if approved, the tower would be built by the Towers LLC, which is a subsidiary of Vertical Bridge. So, you might hear us talking about Horizon as a letsee. Even though Horizon is the applicant, it would be one of the carriers on this site. So, thank you so much for allowing us to participate remotely. I do have a presentation I can share with you. If you can see my screen.
We can.
I will turn that into a slideshow. How's that?
We can see that.
Okay, great. So, the proposed tower would be located at 573 Chestnut Ridge Road in Troutdale. This tower is intended to serve the northwest corner, northwest portion of the county. You can see the tax map parcel here. Parcel's about 110 acres, has a ridge line running through it. It's forest land and a zoned rural farm. And that zoning district does permit communication towers by special use permit. So, we're requesting tonight your recommendation and approval for a special use permit. So, you can see again where the red dot is, the proposed site location on this wooded parcel east of Chestnut Ridge Road, west of Flatridge Road.
Lori, I don't mean to interrupt, but can you pull that slide up? Because all we're seeing is the first page.
Oh, oh, okay, all right. Let me see if I can, sorry about that. Let me, all right, so I'm going to change it on a different. So now, can you see the tax map parcel slide?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thanks for letting me know. So, this slide shows you the tax map parcel, which is approximately 110 acres. And then here we are looking at a Google aerial and you can see the location of the proposed tower west of Flatridge Road. Located here. There are no opportunities to co-locate on other towers because there are no other towers within five miles except one AEP tower, which is 3.7 miles away. That's much too far to serve this area. We typically have towers of 199 feet, two to three miles apart. So, that would be too far to serve the Flatridge area because of the distance and terrain. The zoning ordinance requires the setback of a tower to be 125% of the height of the tower. We're proposing a 199-foot monopole. So, that setback of 248.75 feet is far exceeded. As you can see here, the distances to the property boundaries are much greater than was required. The closest residence is almost 2,000 feet to the northwest. The site would be accessed by a 40-foot wide access easement from Chestnut Ridge Road. There's an existing road, but it would need to be gravelled and to provide 12-foot wide surface. And there's room along the side for bringing in the construction trucks with the tower components. The application proposes a 200-foot radius of tree preservation. And because the, you know, this is a forested parcel, we're proposing that we're asking for a waiver of additional landscaping because it shouldn't be needed for screening the equipment compound in the base of the tower. This slide shows you the Vertical Bridge lease area. That's 125 feet by 80 feet. Within that lease area, you'll see a 50 by 50-foot compound, which would hold the monopole, the circle on the center, and equipment for any carriers who are on that monopole. Within that compound, Horizon would have a 12-foot by 20-foot lease area. And the whole compound would be surrounded by a six-foot chain link fence with barbed wire enough to prevent unauthorized entry and someone hurting themselves by attempting to climb the tower. Here's a schematic elevation plan. So, here you can see the monopole itself would be 199 feet. And that's just matte galvanized steel with a four-foot lightning rod at the top. Horizon Wireless antennas would be at the top at 192 feet. And there's room for other commercial wireless line. So, if they wanted to go on this tower, you'd have service from the other carriers as well. And then Vertical Bridge will be reserving space at 140 feet for the county if it wants to have space on this tower for bio-emergency rescue, that type of thing. Just to show you what the visibility might be, we did do a photo simulation from 8496 Flatridge Road, which is, you know, just half a mile to the east there where the Flatridge Community Center is located. So, you can see roughly how that would appear in the distance, about half a mile away. Grayson County Comprehensive Plan does have a goal of supporting the development of cell towers in the economy chapter. There's a note that wireless is very important, especially for small businesses who are outside of major corridors in towns. And then in Chapter 8, Public Services, Facilities and Utilities, the county recognizes the importance of reliable wireless networks for economic development, education, quality of life, and public safety. And in the Comprehensive Plan, there is a map showing current broadband and fiber coverage. And you can see the location of the local town here. There's some areas in the northwest portion of the county that are lacking in service. That's my presentation, I'll stop sharing. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I do have one quick question. How would the pole be anchored? You say it's a monopole, but how is, when you build, excuse me, when you build those, how are they anchored?
I'll let Sean address that. I don't want to get in a c-.
I apologize for my screen. I have these dial-in, so I hope you guys can hear me. It'll be a map foundation, two by three feet, two by three feet wide, about three feet deep. And it'll be anchored in by the anchor poles. It'll be a, because it won't provide the foundation design that shows that multiple carriers can run it, so.
Is it sufficient for how winds?
Yes, yes, it's fully, if this thing would dip a little over, we would all be gone. These towers would be the last ones to end it up with.
Sean, I believe on the schematic, the design elements that was submitted with the application, it has the wind speed on the front page there. Charlie, is it on there?
Are there no anchor wires with this facility?
No.
This is a monopole, just a stand-alone pole that goes up. There's no guide wires and every, all the wiring would be inside, running along the inside four-holes.
We should also note that there are no lights required or markings on this site. We are waiting on updated letter from the Federal Ideation Administration. We submitted a letter, but it was incorrect. But Vertical Bridge has confirmed that none lights will be required on this tower as the distance from the airport. And we will provide that to the county.
Thank you. I will tell the planning commission that the design plans will be reviewed by the Grayson County Building Official for compliance. If approved by the Board of Supervisors prior to the assembly of the tower. They will have to have a permit through the building department. And so, the concrete and all of that typically is, it's reviewed in the building department. But typically, there's a third-party inspector that does the concrete verifications, whole assembly, and lighting.
If the county first responders or emergency services or our law enforcement choose to utilize the pole for their transmission of signals, will that space be provided to the county? Or will that be a charge to the county?
So, this tower would be managed by Vertical Bridge, not Horizon Wireless. And, you know, I'm not sure what their agreement would be with the county. To my knowledge, they haven't had any discussions yet. So, I think we don't have an answer for that one.
Well, we totally, we apologize for jumping to the point. We totally have an answer for, sorry. We have an answer for Vertical Bridge that they have reserved 140-foot rad center for you people for your, if you're on one usage. The question will be, it'll be free of charge or it'll be an accurate, valid answer in between, you know, between all of them. But they have reserved that space for the county's use.
At 140 feet?
Yes.
Lori, you had a picture of that 140-foot mark on your.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. It's definitely reserved and I can show that to you, to here.
I know there are ordinance sedents that we have that at no charge, but if you'll notice in your staff report, there's a section of code that is applicable here. So, 3-1511 for local government access. Lori, while you're looking for that. The applicant has agreed to provide space on the tower for the county additionally. These may be applicable. Furthermore, noting that Virginia Code Section 15.2, 2316.42A and A provides, in short, a locality cannot require or condition the approval of an application requests solely on the agreement of co-location. So, that is a code section out of Virginia. Yes, they're allowing us 140-foot mark, but there might be a minimal charge. But we can't deny an application just because they're going to charge us a fee.
Honestly, I think the question has to do with how much ground space you guys would be needing. Typically, you guys, if you need a big shelter, there's going to be some sort of, you know, approved due speed for that. But if you're just opening up little cabinets or hanging your equipment on the meat-o-rack, I think they probably wouldn't be going that way. So, we'll get the answer definitively in between.
Thank you. That will be a question that's definitely going to come up at the Board of Supervisors meeting if this recommendation is to approve the cell tower by the planning commission tonight. I can expect that question to be addressed due to the fact that we're in the process of the county is trying to expand coverage and broadband within the, especially the western end of Grayson County.
We'll get that information for you.
Thank you.
I have a sound wind speed on there.
It does and does not have a wind speed. So, at that particular elevation, we are at 35, wait a minute. 3650. So, the way I understand the building code, remind you that there's, you know, we done elevations based on mountain range overlay. This is not applicable as telecommunications are exempt from that. But anything higher than 4,000 feet, you are to be at 110 miles per hour according to Uniform State by Building Code. Right, and it does fall back into the wheelhouse of the building. So, I was thinking that there was an actual miles per hour on the very front of that design.
They have enough. They can provide up to three, two other carriers counting Horizon if they want. If another carrier wants to.
Horizon's at the top, of course. And then there, there is two or three other carriers. It should be.
It says carrier combinations, three carriers.
Three carriers, yes. And the ordinance spills out of two thirds. It does, the wind speed will be picked up and verified by the building official. 100% certain, the inspector will verify that before she even submits it to Chris.
I guess, is anybody opposed or赞成?
I do know that as far as the, I submitted landowner letters to adjoining landowners. And of the landowner letters that I submitted, only one was not picked up. And that was by, how do you say that, I'll say. I don't want to get too, Lash, Living Trust? Lash? Anyway, of those adjoining landowners, I've had no one contact me. I've had no one come to the office. We posted it on the public forum of Facebook for the public hearing tonight. All that I reviewed, so be in favor. I know, we'll go, I'm just repeating. We're going to get to public comment. I'm just telling my planning commission that I've had no one contact me, email, phone calls, or come into the office to review any of this documentation.
Any other questions for, is it Cellco?
Ms. Lori is representing Cellco Partnerships, I believe. Is that correct, Lori?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Lori?
All right.
We thank you for the presentation. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, I will follow up and sum up after we go out of other components so we can entertain. If you also choose, if there's no further discussion, then I would recommend that we go into public hearing and we'll go through it.
Okay, commission, any other discussion before we move on? Okay, do we have a motion to enter into the public hearing for the, this monopole tower that Cellco Partnership is presenting to us? Have a motion, do we have a second? Second. All in favor of entering the public hearing at this time? Let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now entering into the public hearing. Ms. Black is checking out the sign-up sheet. Have a Mr. Joe Hesch. Would that be you?
That's me.
If you will, just step up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us your address and we'll, we'll hear what you have for us tonight.
Maybe I should have said, oh, I'm the only one there to express, to speak my thoughts on it. Anyhow, thank you for the opportunity to say what's on my mind. I'm on my own here out of curiosity more than anything else. My name is Joe Hesch. My name is on the deed to the property, the deed property that is, that is, that is due to the 31872, which is actually at the foot of the mountain that the tower is going to go on. Property has been my family, family members for over, well over 100 years. Jim Jenkins was my grandfather. He had a local store in Flatridge. And I fully expect the property to stay in our family after I'm gone. Having said that, I'm not a resident of Grayson County. I live in Worthville. And, but I have three children. Two of them definitely are interested in the property and will probably live on my house that's on the tax parcel. I guess, I guess, the only thing I have is questions about just what is the real benefit to Grayson County, both tax-wise and otherwise? And now, having asked that question, I know the first answer to it is they were getting better cellphone coverage. And I know that, I'm not a big cellphone fan. I'm too old, I'm still the dial-up telephone and stuff like that. But I do know that there is poor reception there at the house in Flatridge. Some people will do, some people won't. Depending on, Horizon is one of them. They say they don't get it. I don't know. So, I know that's, that's an advantage. But really, what is the, tax-wise, does Grayson County get any benefits here? Or what benefits do you get tax-wise with having the tower on the property? Which, by the way, I may have missed it, but I think the tower height's 199 feet. Is that what they're talking about? Okay. The other, the other question that popped in my mind when I got to notice that it was going to happen was what boundaries or what, what's in place to prevent? This is one tower, more towers coming all the way. And I, and you end up with the mountain being called Tower Mountain. Also, I wasn't real sure where the tower was going to be located. As I said, we're at the bottom of the mountain. But looking at what I saw on the presentation, looked like the kitchen window that we have an open field behind the house and then it goes up the mountain. By the way, we go about halfway to the mountain. The, the tower is probably going to be right, it's not bad in the view. That's not, that's not a big issue. I mean, but I was just wondering, that's one tower. But how about down the road, how many more towers will come? Out of necessity or otherwise? The other thing, maybe it's a mute question, but how, they're going to use Chestnut Ridge Road to go and tower it? And I, how much transportation? Towers, you usually are going to have a whole lot of transportation. Like I said, it may be a mute point. But what's the plans for Chestnut Ridge Road to be improved or otherwise? Again, just looking here. That's basically about my questions. And like I said, I'm hearing mainly just out more for curiosity. my questions, and like I said, I'm hearing mainly just out more for curiosity than I am to make waves. I'm not here to make waves. So, uh, with that, I appreciate the chance to, uh, uh, care for you. You can ask me questions, or, or I'll stand here and listen to what you got to say, or I wonder what, uh, sorry, back too long.
Okay. We appreciate you coming and, and, uh, asking your questions and showing your concern. We, we can't, uh, formally answer those questions-
Understand.
-at this time. So, but we do greatly appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, Commission, we have no one else signed up for public comment. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing at this time? Alright, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Say, have a second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed at this time. Commission, do we have thoughts at the time of discussion?
We'll all just do a sum up, um, and try to-
Okay.
Answer some of these questions while we're going through the process. Is that what you want me to do?
That's a good one.
Alright. So I'm just going to give the planning commission a brief synopsis of my staff report. It is basically just going back over what was presented to us. Um, the applicant again is Selco Partnership, and we're doing business as Verizon Wireless for the bridge will be the, uh, moving the tower. This is for a special use permit, uh, construction, construction of a communications tower that exceeds one hundred feet. Anything over a hundred feet, the ordinance requires that. And the location's at five seventy-three Chestnut Ridge Road. It is a rural farm, and it's in the Wilson District. The parcel is approximately at a hundred and ten acres. Uh, the tower exceeds the hundred-foot in height, necessitating a special use permit. The set in the tower was, tower will serve as a primary communications facility with future opportunities for co-location of other wireless providers. And so, in, I will, I'll try to address Mr. Hatch's question. What we do inside of the ordinance in regards to, uh, your, your concern about additional towers being placed. There's language inside of our ordinance for co-location that you heard them saying, we have, we have the ability, or they, there's an ability on the tower, um, to serve three other providers. So, inside of, that's kind of the answer that sums that up. Yes, there's a way for other entities to, to jump on that tower, to be able to provide so that we don't have Tower Mountain. It's not always, I will say this, it's not always the case, just because sometimes it's a challenge for other providers to jump on and co-locate because of the charge that another provider would create, so-
The charge, they would charge somebody else now?
They'll charge, yeah, another provider to jump on that tower. Including us, if we so desire, um. Again, it's a hundred and ninety-nine, a hundred and ninety-nine-foot monopole, with a four-foot lightning rod. And it is finished matte galvanized steel, which is what our ordinance requires, so that it is not as intrusive into the sky. We heard that there was a pickup with FAA. Uh, you'll note that the letter that's laying there in that exhibit says that it's supposed to be lit. But because it is not so close to the airport, it doesn't necessarily have to be lit. It all depends upon the height, so, uh, we will know a little bit more about that being lit. I don't suspect it will be lit, so. But I did want to point that out, that the letter did say that it was to be lit, so I did have, um, Ms. Schweller go back in and verify whether that was a mistake or not. Uh, again, co-location for additional three users is available. The site is forested, it has more sloping topography with minimal, minimal residential impact. And it's located approximately four-tenths of a mile from the nearest residence. There's, of course, no water sewer to this particular site, and it will be secured with a six-foot security fence with three strands of barbed wire. As far as it being compliant with the regulations and with zoning, uh, it does, the tower does comply with the communications tower and antenna regulations outlined in the Grayson County zoning ordinance, Article Three, Section Three dash fifteen. It meets the setbacks requirements, with the residential area being over nineteen-hundred feet away, far exceeding the more, uh, the five-hundred-foot minimum threshold that the ordinance requires. And they did mention something about landscaping. They are requesting a waiver for the landscaping in Section Three dash fifteen, uh, point ten landscaping requirements, um, of the ordinance. You know, the surrounding tower for, uh, for which a special use permit is required. However, the Grayson County Board of Supervisors may waive such requirements. Uh, that landscape is not going to be required. It would be a little bit different if this was located closer to town, you're going to be able to see it. We would, we might look at, uh, the buffer of such. But I am in agreement with, uh, the request. Uh, I feel that the waiver, uh, wouldn't be an issue, just because of the natural tree buffer that's already there. Um, you saw on, on the GIS, it's mostly a wooded lot, or a hundred and ten acre parcel. It shouldn't say lot. So it will definitely be buffered by the natural, um, the natural woods, and it should, that in itself should visualize, uh, minimize the visual impact of the tower. So, uh, so in regards to just my evaluation, I do think that the tower complies with most of the zoning and regulatory requirements. Uh, careful, careful consideration, given minimizing a visual disruption and offering opportunities for future co-location. Uh, the applicant has ensured that the tower meets FAA requirements and its standards, and has provided the structural integrity reports there. Minus the wind, we will come to terms on that, but it will definitely have to meet what the building code requires of a hundred and ten miles per hour. So, as far as, uh, my recommendation, I've provided to you in your staff report, uh, a recommendation based off of what has been provided to us in the application. So, for the purpose of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, welfare, public safety, and health, and good zoning practice, I recommend to plan commission, commission, I can't talk tonight, I apologize, approval of the special use permit application to construct the communications tower and antenna and facilities on parcel tax map number thirty-one dash A sixty-eight in the rural farm zone, Wilson District, with the site being developed as specified in the submitted plans in the application in accordance with Article Three dash fifteen of the zoning ordinance, with the above conditions. And the above conditions on your staff report states that the tower shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the plans and the documents submitted. The applicant's request is honored by recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of waiving the landscaping and screening measures in Section Three fifteen ten, as existing tree growth and natural landforms preserve the rural character and minimize the visual impact. And three, that the tower shall be removed within ninety days of abandonment, as per Section Three dash fifteen point twelve. So, that is my recommendation to this planning commission. Uh, that, I feel that this particular application meets or exceeds exactly what our ordinance says. Uh, and not only that, uh, I feel that as though that it's needed just for the fact that there is very limited service on that end of the county, and knowing that the Board of Supervisors and, and becoming in alignment with their desires for public communication and broadband expansion into that end of the county, this particular, uh, service, cell tower, excuse me, uh, will help expand that opportunity to our current citizens.
And I, I noticed on the application, this might help answer another question you had, that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be no employees, and the technicians would visit the site six to twelve times a year, you know, as far as traffic, um, chestnut ridge.
And then, as far as Chestnut Ridge being improvement-wise, I'm not sure if it's on the six-year plan. Uh, that is something I can check on, to see if that, if that road is in their wheelhouse on this, on the six-year plan, it's, but, um, thank you for pointing that out. I forgot that was in the narrative.
I've got a question. Keep referencing this hundred and ten acre parcel. What is the significance of that? They don't own it or lease it?
They lease a portion of it, the compound.
Just the compound?
Yes, sir.
So what's the significance of a hundred and ten acres?
It's just that it's that, it's a large buffer, and that it's, it's a, um, this particular tower would be the principal tower, use of this parcel.
And the owner of that land can borrow it, do whatever he wants to do with it?
Yes, sir, and they continue as, as it is currently being used.
Just a curiosity question. If that landowner so chose to clearcut the buffer, would we run into issues in the future with that?
I guess we would have to entertain that, uh, if it came up. If he was to go in and log that out and clearcut it.
I think it was built a long ago, inside the-
He wouldn't be able to go within that, he's got a two-hundred-foot buffer around it, yeah.
It's in the fence.
Right.
But that would affect it on his, I think it's outside, yeah, outside.
Yeah.
Two hundred outside, but the thing is-
It wouldn't be able to do anything with it.
It would have to win. So, so we could, we could submit it to a review federally for a change in the special use permit?
If that buffer was to change yet.
Does the county get any tax?
And that was, uh, I don't know a lot about it, but there is definitely, uh, and Travis might know a little bit more about us, since he's, he's got, uh, this is called machine rig pulls tax. So yes, the county, that will receive tax benefit or revenue off of this particular project. As to how much, I do not know. That would be a question for the commission partners.
Commission, what do you all think? Any other discussion?
If it doesn't need a light on top of it.
Do you want to, it doesn't need a light?
It does not need a light at this, at this moment. I know it's sitting at thirty-five, sixty. Is that what that elevation was on there? On the, from that plane, or, yeah. Thirty-six. Thirty-six fifty. From the ground. So it's thirty-six fifty. I know, it's concerning. Um, FAA, if you looked at the letter, FAA indicated that it wasn't in the flight path. It wasn't next to the airport. They're supposed to get me the information that I requested, and that's to clarify that it does not need to be lit.
So does the military fly? Is it, if they control all that, everything?
The, the flight path, yes, sir. Uh, in your, I believe it's in the narrative, or it's in a, uh, it's in my staff report. There's a flight path that the FAA that, I don't, I don't know any other way to explain it, it just, that's the flight path. It shows the X where it's at, that it does not intersect with that. Sometimes I beg to differ, though. I know, I've seen them.
It's burning the X.
But, yeah. But that's all we can do, is it's reported, they know that it's there, so.
And they know the military flies through this area?
Yeah.
So the way this review, we don't really know?
At the moment, uh, they are getting a determination, clarification, and, uh, as you all know, I'm sure the FAA doesn't move very fast. So I'm hoping that we will have a determination by the time the Board of Supervisors meeting rolls around. If not, uh, I still feel like we should preclude it from, just because we don't know. We'll just make sure that if it is supposed to be lit, then it's lit properly before it's being reviewed.
I can chime in and tell you that it will not be lit. FAA has advised us that it would send in clerical error, and they will update with the new FAA that, that show that it will not be lit. They won't get that to you, so we have it. Sometimes I'm just waiting for by their tweet.
I hope so. Thank you very much for clarifying that, uh-
I can, I can, I can guarantee you a hundred percent it will not be lit. There's, uh, the email that I'm reading is FAA advised us that it will send incorrect clerical error, and we, we should file, re-vote applications, and they can send us an updated determination with no lighting requirement.
Thank you. And you'll get that to me hopefully by the next week or so?
I'll get that to you the moment we have.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I answered that question.
We all about, definitely all.
So. Alright, Commission, thank you. So, discussion. Good to meet proposals, anytime. Do you want a motion?
I have a motion.
Whatever. The motion, we have a discussion. I move that we approve the application. So, as perceived.
So we have a recommendation before we proceed, perhaps, or something?
That's a motion, correct?
Correct.
As presented.
That we, the motion is that we approve forwarding it to the Board of Supervisors, uh, as presented. Is that correct?
With those three conditions.
Right. With those three conditions, is it? So, our motion, our second. Now we have a discussion.
And, and then you got the second.
We have no discussion. No discussion, so we have a vote, vote, vote. Okay, we'll vote, vote, vote. This is why I will take.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
Uh.
Mr. Jennings?
Aye.
You are on that administration note with me expecting a public hearing for a proposed 199 foot cell tower in Flatridge next week. Thank you very much. I was going to say, are you still there?
Yes.
Alright, so, thank you so much. Is there any questions you have for me in regards to the conditions that we put in place?
No, thank you. All the conditions sound fine to us. They're good for the applicant, so thank you very much for your review.
And I will address that particular waiver of landscaping as part of that condition and explain the reason for that, so.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Alright, thank you Ms. Wheeler, you all have a blessed night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looping around a lot? Having your own business that has came up?
I have no old business that I'm aware of that I can talk about.
Commission, nothing else? Thanks everybody for your time, coming out. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
That's our move.
We're releasing that. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.